So I'll say. How about you? What was this one grab with you actually? It's been a quarter of the last week. It's been a throw in the brush. So anyway, I'm just waiting on it. Mr. Trump, I guess. I'm not sure. 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 Yeah. 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 I got a little more close. I'm gonna get a call. There you go. Too many more. No, but I didn't have a little. I was there. Yeah. And I was going to tell the way I mean. I was just so glum. Oh, that's something. You can't write a letter out for a week and forget the flavors every day. Oh, yeah. Really, not that way. We don't have. 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 Really, not that way. We don't have. 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 Yeah. I don't usually tell the board. I don't know. I don't know. Pretty much, I'm pretty much.
Christine, let me know. You like put on your agenda.
Oh, me too. Yeah. 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 I was noting, really? Yeah. Yeah. The first time you've gone out there. I was just. 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 Yeah. Okay. I'll get you some help. I'll get you some. I'll get you some. I should go through. I mean, I didn't. I didn't. I just started. I didn't. I didn't. I didn't. I didn't. I didn't. I didn't. Just going to. I shouldn't say no. Next to the lady dressed. I'm like. 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 Yes. Yeah. I'm thinking. Then, you know. I think he said. He thinks he heard. He didn't get down to it. I think he was. But it's. That's it. No. Yeah. See. So. So. Yeah. I'm thinking. Then, you know. I think he says. He thinks he heard. He didn't get down to it. I think he was. 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 I think Bill did his. Twelve hundred. And then I did. I did. I did. I did. I did. Just like. Okay. We're gonna use. Okay. Okay. All righty, everybody. Uh, I'd like to thank you all for coming out on a national holiday. Tell the A M when playing board. So, thanks for coming. All right, I'll try to make this as brief as possible. Um, first we go over quarter exits. Either end of the hallway, out of the door, right or left, less closer. A E D's on a wall over there. If needed, if you have a cell phone or any other type of interruption on your. And your being, please turn them off so everybody has the same ability to state their, uh, issue at their end. Okay. Uh, with that being said, uh, I guess we can start out with, uh, does everybody look at last month's meeting? Any additions, corrections? If so, we stay if not, uh, motion approved.
Motion approved. Minutes.
Seconded. The move is seconded.
Linda Drew, yes, here.
Here.
Chris Slater.
Here.
Mark Fowlerstein.
Here.
James Nesbitt.
Here. Okay, let it be noted, we have two people that are gassed up tonight. Okay, it is a holiday. Uh, and there's probably some scheduled kind of conflicts. I don't have an issue with it. Okay. Hopefully, the board won't either. Um, that being said, um, I guess we can start out with, uh, does everybody look at last month's meeting? Any additions, corrections? If so, we stay if not, uh, motion approved.
Motion approved. Minutes.
Seconded. The move is seconded.
Linda Drew.
Upstayed.
Steve Law.
Upstayed.
Chris Slater.
Yes.
Mark Fowlerstein.
Yes.
James Nesbitt.
Yes. I don't know who to approve. We approve. If we have approval, second majority. Um, if not, we'll run it by legal and, uh, we'll go after. Let's see what we have on the count. All right. All right, first item on the agenda is a public hearing for a property split for Roger Young, seven five six Drake Road. So is somebody here representing? Are you gonna read the proof of notice, Chris? Pardon me. Are you gonna read the proof of notice? I can tell you what I'd like to read it, but I'm gonna hear it. So, uh.
Thank you.
Verifiable.
Okay, uh, public hearing, property split, Roger Young, seven fifty six Drake Road. Application of Roger Young, owner Roger Young, seeking a property split of a parcel located at seven five six Drake Road. The intent is to create three parcels out of one. Text account number zero two eight dot zero two dash zero zero one dash zero two six dot one. This is in the R V L zoning district. We have one more, uh, public hearing, preliminary and final single lot subdivision for Michael and Sarah Lee of Two Summer Haven Drive. Application of Michael and Sarah Lee, owners, Michael and Sarah Lee, seeking preliminary and final single lot subdivision for a new dwelling to be located at Two Summer Haven Drive, Hilton, New York, one four four six eight. This is in the S R zoning district and L W R P. Account number, text account number zero zero eight dot one five dash one dash four. All interested parties will be given the opportunity to be heard at this time.
Okay. Very good. Brief explanation and then we'll open it up.
Sure, um, so this property is located on the northeast corner of, uh, Clarkson, Clarkson, Hamilton Line Road and Drake Road. Um, it does currently have a house on the piece property. Um, that is the sole purpose of the subdivision, although we're gonna create two larger lots out of it. Um, as Cheryl stated, it was, uh, Mr. Young owns the property, used to go on to the Guipo family. Mr. Young is the executor of the estate. So, no improvements are planned at this time. Um, I think the goal was just to separate the house from rest of property.
Okay, this time we'll open the public hearing. Uh, anybody in the audience here specifically for this public hearing? And if so, uh, please state your name and you can speak. Now it be shown there's no one from the public here to, uh, ask any questions or make any comments, um, seven fifty six Drake Road. And at this time, I'll open it up. Go compliance. Be ready.
Do not hit any issues involved and explain per key tools. Uh, memo which I agree with.
Okay, let it be shown and put in the record that we do have, uh, a letter from the planning board attorney. Property split is, there had been an issue about the authority to make this application. Letters are testamentary and the property owners' estate decisions by themselves. This is an unlisted action under seeker, so I recommend the following resolution, which will follow. Um, anybody on the board? Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Uh, I would entertain a motion is provided for. And for these other, we need to close the public hearing. Let's think of it. Public hearing is closed. There you go. Thank you. So. Sir.
Gerald and Shirley Wilson, uh, we're at seven thirty seven Drake Road.
Okay, I had, I had closed public hearing because nobody said anything.
He just was.
Okay. Uh, but in this case, please voice your opinion.
What is your opinion?
Well, I'd like to see a site map.
The site map is. Can you hand him the copy of it?
Sure. Did you see the notice in the paper? Yes. Okay. They had one on, on record here the whole time. Okay, where's, where's the house? Here's Drake Road and the housing question. The house is here. Yeah? Where's the property room? So. This is gonna be a line right here. Okay. And then this is gonna be a line right down here, giving this flat and this flat. And this is the Clarkson, Hamilton Line Road. Okay. Yeah? Okay, and what's, what is Roger planning to do with that property? Good question, I don't know. Well, the question remains to be answered. If he decides to build a high rise on there, I'm not gonna be very happy about it. Well, tonight, our work known as a split, okay? But if there's any development to be done on these properties, they would have to come back in here and meet with these folks again. And then they're gonna do another public hearing again. So if you see one in the paper, then you wanna see Cheryl about seeing, seeing what they're gonna do. That way you can get ahead. Yeah. You're talking right now just dividing the property. Exactly.
Get your open app.
You know what? If you want, you. Can they talk tomorrow and I can get you a copy of the book?
Oh, okay.
Sorry? Any other questions?
They can keep that one. They keep that one, they can keep it.
Oh, okay, good.
Like, sure, can I have the proper spelling of your name for the record?
Last name, proper spelling, please?
Wilson.
Okay.
Thank you for that, for Wilson.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna reclose the public hearing. I am looking for assault. Pardon me. Not for closing the public hearing. Okay. Uh, we're gonna do a seeker determination.
Yep. First, let's propose that the planning board classify this section as an unlisted action for the purpose of conducting an uncoordinated review under seeker. And we have completed the environmental assessment form. On, upon the record before the board, the planning board makes a finding that the actual has no significant environmental impact and adopts a negative declaration. This is all for seven fifty six Drake Road property split.
I'll second. Okay, motion for approval.
Linda Drew, yes. Steve Law.
Yeah.
Chris Slater.
Yes.
Mark Fowlerstein.
Yes.
James Nesbitt.
Yes. Okay, at this time, uh, public hearing segment for this application is over. I'll hold on for a minute. So, hold on for this section being closed.
Yeah, I already. Okay, I'll do it again. Linda Drew.
Yes.
Steve Law.
Yeah.
Chris Slater.
Yes.
Mark Fowlerstein.
Yes.
James Nesbitt.
Yes. Very good.
Main motion out. I hear you. All right, I propose we approve the property split for Roger Young at seven fifty six Drake Road. Application of Roger Young, owner Roger Young, seeking a property split, split of a parcel located at seven fifty six Lake Road. Intent is to create three parcels out of one. Text account number zero two eight point zero two dash zero zero one dash zero two six point one. This is in the R V L zoning district. Following documents have been submitted for review, the application for the property split. Last will and testament, site plan.
Hold on for a minute. Hold on for a minute.
Linda Drew, yes. Steve Law.
Yeah.
Chris Slater.
Yes.
Mark Fowlerstein.
Yes.
James Nesbitt.
Yes.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right. Second public hearing for Michael and Sarah Lee, Two Summer Haven Drive, preliminary and final single lot subdivision. All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. We are seeking preliminary and final single lot subdivision for a new single family dwelling to be built at Two Summer Haven Drive. Um, on June twenty first, we were granted two variances, uh, from the zoning board regarding minimum lot size and minimum lot width. Um, prior to any construction, uh, we'll work with the town engineer regarding ideal location of the future sewer pump station. Uh, no structures will be within the sixty six foot ingress, egress on the property. And, uh, that's pretty much it. Happy to answer. No questions.
Very good. At this time, I'll open a stream to the public. Is there anybody here who would like to testify for this application or have any questions for the application? If so, please stand, state your name for the record. No one here? I'll give you a second chance, everybody okay with this? All right. All right. There's no questions from the attorney or the town engineer right on here, Cheryl?
Uh, no questions from myself. I was down on the property with Jane Clapp from the conservation board, L W R P. And we spoke with the owners quite lengthy and everything seems to be really successful.
Questions from the board?
No.
No? Good. Good. Okay, at this time, I'll close the public hearing. Please hold on.
Linda Drew, yes. Steve Law.
Yeah.
Chris Slater.
Yes.
Mark Fowlerstein.
Yes.
James Nesbitt.
Yes. Very good. Um, I need a couple motions for this. Uh, I'll make a motion that considers an unlisted action under seeker. Um, prefers to conduct an uncoordinated review under seeker and a completed environmental assessment form. And upon the record before the board, the planning board makes finding that actual has no significant environmental impact and adopts a negative declaration.
Upstayed.
Hold on for a minute, Cheryl.
Linda Drew, yes. Steve Law.
Yeah.
Chris Slater.
Yes.
James Nesbitt.
Yes.
Mark Fowlerstein.
Yes. Okay, at this time, I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary and final single lot subdivision for Michael and Sarah Lee, Two Summer Haven Drive. Owners, Michael and Sarah Lee, as a dwelling to be located Two Summer Haven Drive, Hilton, New York. This is an S R zoning district, L W R P, account number zero zero eight point one five dash one dash four. Following documents been submitted. Letter intent, preliminary and final lot subdivision application, site plan checklist, deed, warranty deed, short E A F, and site plan. All variances on pending branches.
Upstayed.
Hold on for a minute.
Linda Drew, yes. Steve Law.
Yeah.
Chris Slater.
Yes.
James Nesbitt.
Yes.
Mark Fowlerstein.
Yes.
Very good.
Congratulations.
Yes, thank you. Thanks. Yeah, all right, sounds good.
All right. Next item on the agenda is for John and Mary Testa, fifty seven hundred West Latoma Beach Road. Uh, conservation court development permit. Good. Just seeking a permit to build a twenty by sixteen foot deck, uh, in our backyard. Make side part of it. Is this the one?
The floating deck.
The floating deck is the deck.
Now, it's not in the water.
I say deck, yeah.
So, all righty, there was some recommendations, uh, by your town engineer. Okay. Uh, I'm just gonna step up. Maybe I'm not speaking up. Okay, uh, the application indicates that the deck is to be floating. I understand this to mean there will be no foundation, you're open self-supporting on the ground. Through the proximity to the coastal erosion hazard areas, I recommend that the deck should be anchored to prevent flotation flaps or any lateral movement during base floods or wave action. Okay? Uh, if you have any questions about that, not a deal breaker, you got a copy of that, you can contact our engineer. Okay? And, uh, were you planning on a foundation at all or? Well, from what we were told, we really can't sink any posts in, so it has to be, okay?
But it can have anchors.
Right. They make it with anchors that you can chain it to the.
Right, that's what you wanna do. Otherwise, it could be on Monday.
Your neighbors that.
Yeah, it could be that. Or you could move it out next to the water.
Yeah. It could be a floating.
Now, this is made out pressure treatment, huh?
Yes.
And our breakwater man areas.
Yeah.
About four feet high.
Pretty much you wanna. Yeah, get it sealed.
So we could see land.
Yeah.
Like, you know.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
And may water you.
Um, it's consistent. We all have our.
Okay, Cheryl?
Yeah, she's consistent. And discussed the anchors at the zoning board meeting also. I'm okay with it.
Board?
Hi, I'm gonna see anything. Motion. I suggest that we, uh, consider the Testa application at, uh, fifty, fifty seven hundred West Latoma Beach Road to be a type two action or seeker. Um, and that there be no further determination of significance.
Hold on for a minute, please.
Linda Drew, yes. Steve Law.
Yeah.
Chris Slater.
Yes.
James Nesbitt.
Yes.
Mark Fowlerstein.
Yes. Do you have a copy of our engineers?
Yes.
Okay.
And then on the main, main motion, um, for the conservation quarter development permit for John and Mary Testa at fifty seven hundred West Latoma Beach Road. Application of John and Mary Testa, owners, John and Mary Testa, seeking a conservation quarter development permit to install a twenty foot long by sixteen foot wide by twenty eight inch stall, paving depth. Uh, within one hundred feet of Lake Ontario, this applicant has received required variances for this project. Text account number is zero zero eight point one six dash one dash nine. This is in the S R zoning district, L W R P, C E H A, area conservation quarter, development area, and flood plain. Following documents have been submitted for review, letter intent, conservation quarter development permit application, incident survey, drawing of the.
Okay. All right.
Linda Drew, yes. Steve Law.
Yeah.
Chris Slater.
Yeah.
James Nesbitt.
Yes.
Mark Fowlerstein.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good night. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is for another conservation quarter development permit for Michael McCarthy, seven eight nine Newco Drive. Uh, I'm not here.
He's not here because he has not decided, is it yet, if he wants the fence or just put up a screening? So he is to be taken out of the agenda and he will notify my office when he's ready to come back.
Okay, very good. Okay, next item on the agenda is a property split merge. R and H subdivision five three nine Chase Road and five one seven Chase Road. Rich.
Yes, indeed. This is a part of a subdivision I did, I don't know, fifteen years ago. And I notice it's the economy from it on the south side of Chase Road, it's right between the first bend and the town line road. Uh, recently, he had some relatives move in next door. Um, and that lot was a little bit smaller, so, uh, they agreed to make that lot a little bit bigger. I don't know, it comes out to be like two and a half acres or something like that. So, um, that's what we're trying to get tonight. Um, J P's already, he needs some comments. I'll just impart that on you. Um, one, he wants to see where the existing subject systems are, which I fully understand. Usually do that. And then he did make a comment about the lot being substandard, but it's moving into a direction where it's more compliant, so. I know in the past, I think you guys just kinda leave that because you're making it more compliant, but I didn't realize that at the time.
Cheryl. They, do they need to go to zoning because this is a, well, the one lot's pre-existing.
Yeah.
Of course.
And the other lot is going to be made more compliant with the area.
Okay. It already has the structure on it.
It has the structure on it.
So it's not like you're putting a site plan for a house, which would need a variance. Absolutely.
It's not, I have to go to someone.
Just to answer the question.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, that being said, we need to. Set a public hearing for this.
It's a town road. It's a town road. There are some certain privileges to town. And honestly, if you're kind of, you have to have a public hearing. It's just sort of.
It's a fancy subdivision. You guys are not. Just 'cause it's July, not wearing red, okay, with a little hat, with a little stovepipe. Okay? You wanna see a cage?
I'm just, just, I was just throwing it out there.
All right.
Gotta go fishing.
Well, I understand, we gotta catch something.
Well, I mean, I'm not using right.
Better than a day or two. So then we, we're supposed to set a public hearing date so we can stop this county.
Uh, I propose that we set a public hearing date for August second for the property split merger for R and H subdivision at five thirty nine Chase Road and five seventeen Chase Road.
Is there a second? Hold on. Hold on for a minute.
They all did.
One you can spell. Want me to switch, show on paper?
Linda Drew, yes. Steve Law.
Yeah.
Chris Slater.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Must be a holiday. Okay. You can pull that up, you want. Question I have is I'd like to know what is the zone?
What was the date on that public hearing?
On the second. Yeah, on the second.
Is it a holiday?
Uh, absolutely. I don't know. We don't have any weeks.
Yeah.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is for 1764 Walker Lake Ontario Road. Sketch plan for a solar facility. We don't use farm shit. I saw you two guys looking at the weeds and the crop and all of those stuff, but I don't want to, but I just wanted to make sure you knew what you were talking about.
They're out there.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hi.
You? Full size, right now?
Okay.
I'll speak them for these.
Hold off for two, maybe I'll give you the.
You have, you have five whole extra, you have that I agree with you.
Thank you. Nothing to do with your eyes.
Alright, everybody got a copy of the presentation?
Yes.
Alright. Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Charlie Branham. I am the project manager for this proposed project. I'm here with John Shield from our engineering team. So I will take you through just who we are as a company and go through kind of some facts. So if you flip over to page two. So the applicant DG New York CS5 LLC is a wholly owned subsidiary of Next Air Energy Resources, also known as NEAR. NEAR is the largest generator of renewable energy from the wind and the sun in the world. Uh, we are currently located in 37 states and Canada. We have different renewable resources, including wind, solar, natural gas, and nuclear facilities. Our parent company is a Fortune 200 company. Next Air Energy is the parent company and we are one of the nation's leaders in clean energy. What we primarily do is we build and operate the plant, so we'll build solar and the wind farms and then we operate them as well. And we will sell the power to different municipalities, communities and. Over on page three, we have been around since 1980. We have invested, you must believe, more than $30 billion in the wind and solar facilities. We currently have nine operational projects within the state of New York as far as small scale solar. Uh, we do provide ourselves in building strong partnerships with different companies across the country. And those different utilities, co-ops, and municipalities have joined with us in providing clean renewable power. Over on page four, you will see all of our different facilities across the country. For focus, if you focus on the little purple crosses, those are the small scale solar projects we have around the country. And then you can see the stars, the different wind projects, things like that. So we are pretty much scattered all over the country, including Canada as well. Uh, our total portfolio has approximately almost 22,000 megawatts of capacity across the country. Over to page five. Uh, different benefits to solar projects, they do generate clean renewable energy to contribute to the state's renewable energy goals, to lessen impacts on the environment. They place little to no demand on municipal infrastructure and services. They diversify the region's electricity generation mix, which reduces reliance on natural gas and other fuels. They create jobs during construction with indirect economic benefits, including local contractors, you know, when they're on site, hotels, restaurants, and things like that. They preserve the rural character of the area with low visual profile and quiet operations. And they allow the land to be returned to previous agriculture at the end of the project's life. Okay, over on page six, you'll see the proposed project is located at 1764 Walker Lake Ontario Road. The red outline is the parcel of lanes. Page seven, we are proposing to develop a 4.4 megawatt solar facility on approximately 23 acres of that 76 acre property currently owned by Mr. Eugene Dollar. The project will remain under the control of DG New York CS5 or NEAR. At the completion of the project, we will be the operator of this project as well. Uh, the project is located, you can see on the map kind of where we are in Hamlin. So over to the, say, southeast, located east of Walker Lake Ontario Road, south of Hamlin Center Road, and north of Roosevelt Highway. The project is zoned RVL. And we are currently leasing the property from Mr. Dollar. Over on page eight, you can kind of see just a full-size layout and we'll talk about this a little bit more at the end of the presentation. But that's kind of how the proposed project will look on parcel. Page nine, just a few descriptions of the project equipment. So solar electric generation facilities consists of three main systems. PV modules that convert sunlight into electricity, electrical collection system, and the interconnection equipment. The PV modules are typically approximately six by three feet. They include anti-reflective coating and are attached to a racking system mounted on embedded steel post. For this project, the racking will be a single access tracking system, so it will track the sun from east to west. Direct current DC power from the solar modules will be routed through the inverters to convert alternating current power, which is utilized on the power grid. The project may include up to two equipment pads each, including a transformer and an inverter. Page 10. Access to the project will be provided from Walker Lake Ontario Road. No parking spaces are proposed nor required on site. Construction laydown during construction will be on site. And then tree clearing will be limited to what will be required to prevent shading and not interfere with construction. Page 11. The height of the source equipment will not exceed 14 feet. The project will be surrounded by at least a seven-foot tall primary security fence and included a security gate to prevent unauthorized access. Site plan, fencing details provided in the site plan. At operation, the project will not produce noise, vibration, dust, debris, glare, or traffic. It will not present a safety or use hazard to the surrounding properties. The project will be unmanned at operation and is designed to operate remotely with occasional visits to the site for maintenance activities. These are the centers rated to occur on a less than a monthly basis and will not produce any municipal traffic impacts. Page 12. No signs other than a sign with the facility name, owner, and phone number. It's the main access point as well as warning signs on electrical equipment fencing and at the project entrance are proposed. The early emergency shutdown of the project can be initiated through, it's called a GOAP switch. The operation of the project will be monitored online. An emergency and normal procedures can be implemented remotely. So we have a facility back at our corporate office that monitors all the projects. So if something were to happen, it can be shut down remotely, not as monitored 24 hours. Page 13. There are no known cultural resource within the project area. No H P listed resources, archaeological sites, cemeteries, above-ground historic structures, or historical monuments that have been recorded within the project. Page 14. This is kind of the again of the parcel, the full parcel, you can see the wetlands to the project. And we go through kind of the site plans, we have avoided all impacts to the wetlands. Page 15. Again, avoid impacts to wetlands and surface waters. No digging or trenching will be performed in the wetlands. No trees will be cut in wetlands. We will coordinate or consult with Army Corps regarding appropriate requirements for any disturbing of wetlands if anywhere to occur. Page 16. The project schedule, so as of right now, we anticipate the project to begin construction in April of '22, completing construction in August of '22. So it'll take about four, four and a half months. Page 17, as far as the decommissioning, so the project is designed to last about 25 years. Per the town's decommission requirements, we will establish a financial security bond with the town prior to construction and it will be available to the town. If DG New York CS5 is unable to commence the decommission activities within a reasonable period of time, you will receive a copy of this security document. And our company will be responsible for all decommissioning costs and will list the town's name when it's having access to the security in the event decommissioning is required. And I'm going to turn it over to John just to talk about stormwater and erosion control and then do a quick review of the site plan and then we can come back for any questions.
John Shield, Wisconsin Engineers here in Rochester, in Rochester, excuse me. Yeah, he did a great overview of the project, kind of overlapped a little bit, but hopefully that kind of reinforces the significance. 1764 Walker Lake Ontario Road, 76 acre parcel approximately, it's in the RVL zone. And of that 76 acres, we're going to propose to serve up to around 26 acres. And ultimately, within the fenced area, be about 23 acres to, to house the project. As he, as Charlie mentioned, it's a tractor system, which is kind of two types, there's the sticks and the tractors. This one happens to be a tractor system that we're proposing at the moment. The setbacks for the property for this type of use are 100 feet in every direction. And we are honoring those, well, 600 feet from the front as we're set up right now, over 1,000 feet from the rear. And approximately up to around 110 feet to the side. Again, 100 feet is the minimum, we're offering 110 at the moment. Again, as Charlie mentioned, the no cultural or historical resources on the site that we're aware of. In fact, we do have a letter from SHPO, a no effect letter, that they have confirmed and agree with that statement. Federal wetlands are present on site, we know that from an environmental boots-on-the-ground study from our environmental experts. And we are staying well beyond those federal wetland limits. The state wetlands, you may recall, have a 100-foot buffer built in. The federal do not have that buffer. In any event, we're well over 100 feet with the proposal right now from that wetland. So no impacts, no disturbance to the federal wetlands on site. We will require an entrance permit from the DOT and probably be a minor commercial or sometimes they've been giving us driveway entrance permits. But whatever those requirements are, we'll work it out with that agency. Probably require a paved apron at least through the right-of-way with a installation of a culvert to allow drainage to continue to pass under the new driveway. We are proposing, coming into the site, we're proposing a stone surface, hardened surface to bring access up to, including both of the major equipment pads where the transformers will sit. Beyond that, you can see on your plan where we kind of have two lines running parallel, dash lines. And those represent what we're calling an unapproved access road, which is, which is a lawn area. Not reinforced, not impacted, just a lawn area that gives access around or through those rows of panels and around the sides. As far as, back to drainage and erosion control for a moment, we're not aware of any, any town requirements that are any more stringent than the DEC requirements. And so we'll be following the DEC design manual for stormwater and erosion sediment control will be, due to the size of the area of the disturbance, we'll be putting together a stormwater pollution prevention plan. We have submitted that, a copy of that in its current state with the original application. But we'll, we'll take that and we'll refine that document as we continue to go through the process with your board, ultimately putting together that SWIP. And then with that, we'll file a notice of intent with the DEC and that gives us the ability to go on the property and disturb, disturb the site. With that plan will come erosion sediment controls, any kind of post-construction stormwater management, such as basins or, or channels or bio-retention areas. Most of those are typically not part of a solar project, but whatever the DEC requires, we'll make sure that we meet those, those requirements. And erosion sediment controls are another piece of that, that design and those include items such as a stabilized construction entrance at the road, silt fence, check dams are often used in these projects. Sometimes we've been using, rather than the silt, that's used as a sock intended to solve the same, the same, solve the same issue, which is keeping sediment from being, from washing off of the site. That's, that's what's critical on projects like these, keeping sediment from washing and impacting neighbors' properties and joining watercourses. That's kind of it for erosion stormwater control. I don't know, kind of got into the site a little bit. That's next on the agenda, you lead into that?
Yeah. We can go through the site plans if you want, or we can take questions if you have any questions, you want to go through.
I think I will offer a couple of questions, because there's no answer on the session. Okay, we probably like some time to digest it, go over it. Even guys, which we usually do anyways, is visit the site, take a look at it. Alright. So any other members of the board have some questions at this time that would pertain to what you might do as we go through the next steps. It's not a rubber-stamp project here. First thing I'd like to say is that we have a lot of agribusiness here and solar is not one, it's a facility. It's not a farm. So, if being said?
You are, I noticed you, ladies first, sorry, ladies first.
It says that your portfolio power generating facilities total approximately 21,900 megawatts of capacity. Are these projects that you own or that you've developed?
They're all projects that we own and operate.
You own and operate, so you're responsible for all of them?
Yes.
Okay. And our next question was, you said that the project is designed to last 25 years. Do you have any projects that are 25 years old?
Apparently we do not.
Then how do you get a number?
So the way the solar panels are developed and made, they have a capacity, they have a life of about 25 years before they start losing their capacity.
We have, we have to trust that, right? Because we don't really know. I mean, we don't know from experience.
Right, right.
Do, when do they actually start losing, you know, I mean, they don't just grow for 25 years, so where does the curve start?
So probably, I mean, there's some loss in there throughout the project. But, you know, it's managed, so the way that we have it is we have a higher direct current on there, so it minimizes the loss. So I mean, there's, there's always loss on there, but it starts, you know, towards the end of the life of the project is when it starts to, to lose.
I mean, let's, let's put it, what's the longest project you have already that spans or?
As far as solar, probably about 15 years.
Capacity at this point?
Uh, I mean, we have, we have projects that range from two megawatts to hundreds of megawatts.
No, I'm saying, if, if the day's built, it's 100%. 15 years, what is it?
So it'll always be, so like for this project, for instance, and I can find out in more details now, but for this project, if it's 4.4 megawatts, it'll generate 4.4 megawatts throughout the life.
Throughout the life? The other thing I saw in the area, it said 14 foot is the height, what is the 14 foot?
So the way the tractors are is they, they rotate with the sun, so say they're, they're tall as feet, there'll be a maximum 14 feet when they're tilted towards the sun. So it'll be from, say, standing right next to it to, or the tilt, depending on the tilt level.
No battery storage on this project? I'm just curious, and you may have, I see the distributed generation is the majority, what is the difference?
So distributed generation is the smallest, so say 20 megawatts or under. It's the, we call it distributed generation or small-scale solar.
Like homes?
Right, roof caps, carports, field, like smaller fields like this. Or it's the majority of the, say, 20 megawatts or under. And then we have the larger, which, you know, are hundreds of acres.
Oh, I know. Do you ever sell the projects?
We do. We have sold a few. You know, we usually say, especially to the board, if we were to ever go back, for some reason, we were ever sell this project, we would come back before the board to talk about it. But we have sold a few, to different companies, not a lot. Which is all dependent.
Mark?
Okay. So it's hard to tell exactly the extent of the, the screen that already exists out there from the site. Would you do a visual simulation or take pictures from around, from port to site to try to simulate what it would look like? So we could tell if the current existing vegetation is sufficient or if we could ask for additional.
Yeah, we could definitely look into that.
If we wanted something like that would be helpful. Do you know the extent of the off-site work that the utility might have to do to connect this to their system?
So as far as onsite, there will be five poles. And then it'll connect, there's a distribution line right across the street.
Across the street there?
So it's right there, it'll just run across the street.
Alright. And do you know what type of foundation you're planning on doing for the panels?
For the panels? Can't say, typically they've been driven, driven pile, each pile. Wouldn't want to say that committed 100%, but that's, that's typically what we, what we see.
I saw there was a note for stockpiled soils, are you planning on doing a lot of grading work or?
No, this site, you may see some notes on our plans that are, they're kind of.
Generic.
Generic and apply to products in general. Any grading, there's a grading plan in that set, any grading that we're proposing will be on that grading plan. We may, as we work the DOT for that entrance permit, there might be some grading upfront. Other than that, it's really going, there's no intention for mass grading across the site, any grading, minimal land disturbance. You know, we say up to 26 acres because we just, we just need to build that in upfront, but typically there's minimal land disturbance associated with the stupid way that they drive the pile, access the site.
Now, there's a, there's a house on this property, some sort of building. Is that from the stay, is it?
Yes. Yeah.
Rental you or something?
It's a rental. Yeah, Mr. Dollar owns it.
Clean-up day. Yeah. The first build and operate is really something, the first project we hit.
First build and operate is really something, the first project we hit changed owners before it started to produce. And so that's refreshing. Got a question, you're looking at 23 acres in operation, ours in total was 76.
Right.
And there, so that kind of brings it up, can you get it, the project slid over away from the house or farther away from the road?
Yeah, we're trying to minimize impact for the land, go around the southeast side of the property.
Yeah, okay. We can tell we have a little easier, like I said, top of the bridge, which is probably getting there. The height of 14 foot on our first project, we had a road to the west and a road to the south of the project. We limited the 12 foot. And I think the original mini thought on that was from the road, these would look more like a mobile home park, so that the property owners really understood what it was. So we will probably visit that 14 foot because if we, if we just limited one at 12, and now we go to 14, and the next guy in the door will say, well, let's go to 18 or something. So we've got to take care of that. So I'd like to know, and then in the book, we got the mail, which is pretty nice, this same photo, or same drawing showed a removal of vegetation on the backside of the house.
Right. And we're not sure at this point if we're even going to need to do any type of tree clearings, so all those trees might end up staying.
The trees between the solar panel and the rope are not a bad thing.
Right.
Because you're heighting it, but in your plans, they're called for removal.
Right. And there would be a small section at the east side of where the house is located from the back end, that that potentially for shading issues, there would have to be about 0.1 or 0.2 acres of trees removed, but then we would add the western buffer as well to block out any sort of.
So one of, I'm sorry to interrupt, because I'm familiar with the plan set, so one of the plans, when you get into larger sizes, it should be more obvious if we've done our plans correctly, there should be a demolition plan in there, and that, that's the one that's going to define. If it's just a no point to, you don't know where you stop, where you start, right? There should be on our demolition plan, a line indicating the limit of that removal.
Yeah.
And then it's indicated that it's generally to minimize, reduce the lighting.
This is more of the suggestion than a scale.
Yeah, yeah, the large-scale plans are priceless.
Yeah, you get a lot more than those. Jump in, are you ready? Yeah. So on the other one, just reminded me, we had special planting that was put underneath the panels, the help, the bees, I guess, it's clover and a different type of mix. Is that something to be, I mean, Cheryl would have the details of it, but.
Right. Potentially we could look at it.
We have local honeybee, honey producers in this area, and we're trying to keep the population healthy.
Right. And the remainder of that land will go back into agriculture.
Now, you mentioned that, is, are you taking up all of the farmland on that parcel?
No, we only.
To gain access to the farmland?
So there is on the north side, and you can probably see it if we open up the site plan, but on the north side of the property, there is a 94 foot, I think, gap in between where the road is and the property line.
Is there a farm road there along that north lane?
There is not a farm road there, no. But they would have access to use that.
It looks like the last set of panels jumps even closer to the property line as you get here on the project, and that's.
Yeah, there's a.
Was, we want to make sure that they have access if somebody would still be wishing their farms back under this property, that there would be proper access for.
Yeah, that's on the north and the south side of the property, they'll have access.
Yeah, the other thing, I thought I heard you say something about a gas lane, did you mention running a gas lane back there?
No.
I misheard that, okay.
Might be existing one in the right way? Maybe that was the right.
No, I thought you said something about running a gas line back, but I'm slightly excited.
Shouldn't be.
Hey, who's, what power company are you providing electric to?
National Grid.
National Grid, okay. How far away is their switching station?
I believe it is less than, less than a mile, I have to look into that, but it's close by. I've never been talking about that.
There's going to be a test later.
Yeah.
Somebody said, how there's going to be a test.
All right.
Okay.
All right. We might, we might require some help for the whole way back so that property is suitable for the farmer. You know, if it's rough or if it has to be graded, or you got to bring some gravel or what have, that's something you can look at in your future, so we can take a walk.
Yeah, we don't think there's, there's not a road back there now.
Well, you know, talking something with the straight down the middle.
If you're farming, I think going anywhere they want, they got a big fence or a middle thing.
We really trying to preserve our agriculture, and we don't want to take 70 acres out of service only if we're taking 23 acres out of service.
Yeah, we'll make sure and they'll have access.
Mark, in our scheme of ability to provide for National Grid to accept power based on their facilities, does this max us out or do?
Turn your windows down, is this kind of close, maybe one smaller system, they still go, give off a substation upgrade?
Yeah, so that's where the 4.4 megawatts comes from, because we got to talk to them and their maxed out to get the things.
So this does max it up? That makes sense. I was wondering why you got 4.4.
Okay, we started at 5 when they kept.
So this is probably it for us.
In this little booklet here, you talk about signs, but you need to have a sign of some sort, I'd say.
Yes, yeah, there'll be, there'll be the property owner, name and number, sign, and then all the warning signs on the equipment and along the fence.
Okay, but the ones out in the right of way?
They should, I think government should be on the fencing, should not be out by the road, on the right of way, should be on.
They may need a permit for that.
Yeah, there's no proposed sign out, just on the.
That's not a deal breaker, but just clarity, okay? In this first warm and buzzing meeting we're here, okay, before we get into the nitty-gritty, okay? Your SWIP, is there going to be, will code compliance have access to a competent person with phone numbers, and will the SWIP forms be available to us at these events?
Will they send them to us every week, every six weeks, like we do with our.
You're doing the inspections, right?
Projects in the town.
I'm going to do the inspections, yes, sir. Is the town in MS4? We can get you to, we'll get it to you at your request, it's already done.
It wouldn't matter, but that's what we require of the others.
It's not a problem. No, we can do it, we'll set up whatever format. We do that with other towns digitally, but if you want a hard copy.
They usually send it to us and get email.
That's perfect. That's very easy.
And for our residential projects, it's usually every four weeks or every six weeks. I had a little SWIP.
I know, and they've changed some of the regulations.
Since then.
Every, I'm sorry, what was that, that's up before us?
Every four weeks or every six weeks, I would do a SWIP report.
For residential?
For residential, though.
Okay.
That's all I'm just saying that we did for residential.
I would, we would give these to you with each report within, within two days of the completion of the inspection, and we'll also, we'll work with the applicant to make sure that there's a copy of, you know, SWIP, all of the requirements of the DEC, the SWIP itself has to be on site, inspections need to be on site, we're aware of them and work with the applicant to make sure that that's on, and contractors certified.
Just so you know, just about everybody on this board is, some form or other, they have, has been involved in construction, both heavy and weighty, in this for, and I return this whole board, okay? Very dull. Birdhouses?
Yeah.
You sell all your pictures. Somebody else must be running the tables, huh? Visual impact analysis was talked about by Mr. Shep from Monroe Group. Since our last one we looked at, we've had a really heavy infestation of our ash trees, like everybody else for losing them, okay? I know power companies are scratching their head trying to get things cleaned up around their minds. As far as your visual impact analysis, I urge you to check and see what's in the hedgerows since you want to use this partial screening because of the RAAS and our collars, okay?
Can I, I'm sorry, can you just give a little more detail on that so that we can provide what it is you're expecting to see? So my experience with those is that they're done from a certain vantage point, and they, what we've done in the past is kind of show chronological order, kind of here, planted in five years or 10 years or eight years in future, whatever, you know, some order like that, but it all starts with the perspective we're starting with. So we can do something from the street, that's kind of feels like the no brainer.
Right.
And then what other perspectives?
You got Roosevelt Highway, okay? It's a little ways away, okay? If that's going uphill there, is it going, is it going to show if we start here with residential development working, you know, adjacent to the property, using the other side where there's a, if you feel, or we feel when we take a look at it, that you're going to lose that somehow, okay, within that 25 years, we might ask for something different. We might ask for something on a fence, I don't know.
More planting, you know.
Okay.
They have plantings around.
Those are just questions that are going to be thrown your way.
Just a good photo inventory of what it looks like.
What you provided right now is pretty good in this stage. Do you know who's currently faring that on Gene's property?
I do not.
Can we find out who's, just for general, anyway, we could find out who's actually using that ground?
Do you know it all?
I don't, I think Scott Reese was, but it might be right now, I don't, I'm not sure.
I can make a phone call tomorrow.
I'd like to find out, I'd kind of like to find out what kind of soils we have there.
Hopefully there's a soil, a soil inventory and a soil.
I think there is one. They need a variance for the fencing?
It's a year, like the recent fencing is 6 feet. If they want 7, they have to have variants. So, well, if it's facing that, sometimes there's a soil type also, they could.
It is in that, in that.
Compared to some of the other soils in town, public question would be, let's say Daker, saying, oh, well, that's some of the best soil we have in here, and we don't want to lose it, but if it isn't, okay, okay, and it's marginal or whatever value, it lends more credence to the ability for site in the project, okay, or something else. I'm not saying, I want you to say soil wouldn't grow a dandelion, but.
I noticed in here you also have maximum structure height of 15 feet on the one chart. Is it 15 or 14?
Yeah, we assume 15 before we spoke to you to zero that in, so 14 is.
Yeah, 14 would be max, so, I mean, very well maybe lose.
Yeah, well, I know what you're looking at, we'll adjust our plan. 14 is a number.
But you might also find out with what you add there, okay, when you're looking Roosevelt Highway or the front, that 14 is a deal breaker, but we have to maybe justify that, okay? Though what we have in the past is by 12. And your applicant, civil site plans and stuff, some numbers and phone numbers and contact.
Yes.
Do you have any facilities in Monroe County or reasonably close?
Not operational.
Are you building any that are reasonably close to us?
There's a Hamlin A and a Hamlin B, which, there's a Hamlin A and a Hamlin B.
Where are they located?
They're located, I'd have to get the address for you.
Yeah, in Hamlin, in the town of Hamlin?
Yes.
Really?
Is your Reven Road?
Yes.
980 Reven Road? No building from that after that.
So you have no operational?
You assume that.
100 acres.
In quiet.
Quarter, okay. That's one we already looked at.
Yeah, it's been approved.
Sounds like they just purchased it.
Is that what it is? Just purchased it?
That's what he's telling us.
Just purchased 980?
Just a little bit.
No surprise, no surprise there.
Here's a length of time for approvals. Okay, just to go back to A and B, they had in the fool. Okay, there's a timeframe, and they're expires. Okay, just, you know, one year, so we'll be talking to you about something else. All your apples want this. Okay. I think you had one other question. Oh, testimonials go along with what, your question. You have other facilities in your estate, small municipalities or other municipalities. Testimonials are good, you're correct, for the public hearings and stuff like that, comfort of dealing with a developer that wants to do the right thing goes a long way to justify existence of properties viewed, so, that would demand. There's going to be no formal action. There were some comments by your attorney, who's going to be here next month. We're going to want to look at this, we're going to want to look at other requirements that are in this document that have been filled out along here, yeah, yeah, for, okay? We'll probably at some time in this review process, spend an evening going over every one of them. Okay, it'll be a long meeting, okay? But you got to work in there.
He's playing the hat.
I'm going to tell you what you're pretty good at. Well, then you ask, oh, no, I should, great answer, so you're ready to have. Uh, no, it's just for the record, we get sure, due diligence, we've done it, and other facilities, so we don't miss something, and, and you know that the town has acted out of pilots.
Yeah.
Hey, this is just a sketch plan, anything from the town board that you might want to share at this time?
Well, I've got a question on page five there, this is for my own curiosity. Under benefits of solar energy product, it says allow the land to be returned to previous agricultural at the end of projects, like, how many of those projects have you returned? Has there been any projects that you've done that you've returned to the cost of land?
We haven't reached the project's life yet, end of projects, but we have a decommissioning plan for each project, which goes through, returns, returns the land to how there's no.
Experience in it as of this point?
No, but we, no, not yet.
How realistic is it that you would do that, just putting new panels up and going for like 25 years? From a business standpoint, it seems like it's a no brainer.
Right, right, I mean, the lease itself is only 25 years, so we'd have to negotiate and then lease and all that. I mean, I guess if it's economical.
Technology in 25 years would change where you're going to put something up, a little different.
The way, yeah, the way that technology's changing and the way that green energy of the whole of the coin, it's, you know, what kind of technology we'll have in 25 years.
Without putting in a harsh value, so we'll say off the record, will these support themselves financially without aid from the government?
Yes.
Maybe they produce enough electrical power to where, is it a good deal to own one?
It's a good deal.
Are you community solar?
Yes.
I'd like to know statistics on how many AM residents, residents have signed up for community solar. That would be a good question, how many I'll investigate that.
We have recently been asked by Department of State, was it, about comments and how we felt our, you know, experience in dealing with solar. There's a, apparently the state's trying to put something together. So there's a lot of information that might be good for that. Janine, we've got a corridor going through here, right? As far as the wetlands at Moore, was it, no?
Yeah, we've definitely.
What's the correct word for that, Moore? Mormon, correct?
I don't know, I haven't seen, I always saw it from book, I didn't see the site, so I don't know. But it was, it just said federal wetlands, so that makes sense, I think.
Right, we've got, we have a conservation board, conservation quarter all the way to districts around the town, so. But we, yeah, would love to know, from my knowledge, we're not in one of those, but I would love that information soon. Soon as it's available, yeah, that'd be. Well, sometime within the next month or so, we can get any mapping that we might have, and Janine, you can share it, show us through the show. And take a look at it, and then if there's something that's mundane to this project, it's better sooner than later, we can get together.
The boundary is like 200 feet.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, and we're well, we're well. It's also in the big circle on the foot, so I'm not sure.
Blue lines in here, maybe, yeah, so, strange.
Just also from the town's perspective, it would be, we would appreciate a notification from National Grid when you're putting power into the grid, when you're up and operating. So the town knows. We can do that.
Probably should get a C of O. Like Lake Silver. Yeah, like, we've done a few tests on that.
How low? Battery storage, it's been quite a talk, a lot of towns are going, you know, low, town goals and stuff like that. Is there anything in your future that you would see where you're gonna come in here and say, we need a battery storage?
No, that's not it.
Because. Why is that, I'm just curious?
But it's restored direct current before it becomes alternating current, because the sun doesn't shine in the night time.
I know, I know, why, why wouldn't we pursue it?
Financial reasons. It's not economical, right?
At what point does it become economical?
It all depends, so there's, I mean, there's different projects just all around the country that do have storage associated with them. We as a company, it's a newer kind of technology, so there's probably, there's still a lot of room to grow as far as making it work for storage. So some of them do, but it just all depends on, you know, how we run the finances and what the size of the project and where it's located and all that. So there's a lot of different factors that goes into it.
So then you do it the closest to your transmission facility or size of the project?
No, I mean, it's like, Magrid, sorry, the interconnection is capped at 4.4, but not for this project.
All right, well, you've scratched the surface on a lot of initial items. So, you may, you submitted an application. When we find, when we go through parts of our review, it'll become a time when we accept that. That's when time starts, okay? So completeness, turnaround time, and all that other stuff, submit it doesn't mean you've got an application. Just see it all that out front, all right? Say anything else we've, we've looked at early on that we should talk about at this time? Okay, is all good?
Yeah, it's pretty good, considering where you're at, it's a pretty good application.
Yeah.
Your performance as well.
But like I said, I'm one of the other, the three representatives, right? I'm not wearing the red suit, because it's getting on. That being said, thank you for this, it's a broad overview, give us a chance to digest it, and if during, over the course of the next few weeks, if the being, you put out agendas, is when we have something to discuss and complete. So I'd be talking to our engineering resident, JP. I'm sorry, your engineer is in house? It's, no, it's.
MRB group?
MRB group, okay. John Moscheff, okay, is the engineer. All right, I would reach out to him, he should be going back to work. Well, he said he was going. So, but no, early on, formatting, looking at correctness, little things, then we'll go further.
And we'll contact you in some minutes.
Yeah, I mean, if we have a certain amount of completeness, or at a point where we need to have it, then you have a, you have a cutoff date for getting out of meetings.
Yes, yes, if anything you need.
Our attorney is O'Toole, law firm, he's local, okay, he's dealt with these before, works out of the boards and stuff. I wouldn't berate anybody, please get my call back or anything else like that, but if I wanna introduce yourself, somehow. And give that, avenue of communication open right from the start. It's the only way you'll get through the process of a town. So the one last thing that I'm gonna say is Mr. Ballard, is that, as we know, anybody elected is a decorated World War II veteran. He's been a big member of this community for years, does own a lot of property, okay? I would ask you to respect that, in all forms and applications, all right? So, we've had a couple of issues with that, they couldn't manage, it's not fair. That being said. Thanks, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so you're coming. You have anything else from the King of Ballard at the top?
Any discussions?
Huh?
Any discussion?
Yeah.
One of our conservation board members, she's a moving out of town, so she will be leaving her conservation board.
So we have another hole in it, we've filled, so. We gonna be advertising something? We should have a crowd there, I was trying. We should have one.
Oh, but says Dave Hem wants to.
Dave Hem, not.
No, Dave, I want, Dave must proceed.
Give me, give me Steve's, and I'll get it to him. I'll take Steve's. So just some.
Can I keep talking?
Sure, sure.
This is a conservation board, so that, the, I was thinking it was very productive. There's a kind of a rough plan that was presented to the committee members online, you probably saw it.
I couldn't get, I couldn't get it off my, my computer for some reason, I don't know if it was in the mail.
68 pages.
I didn't, I, nobody, nobody printed it.
No, I was just gonna say, I, I.
Could you see it?
I started it, but I couldn't get the whole document, so I don't know if it's the setting on my, my notebook or what. I lost something else from another engineer here this week, so maybe it was in my, as it goes through my phone and then goes to my Chromebook. So, but.
So we went, we went through that, particularly the inventory analysis section, and made a few comments at that point. But three weeks from, well, meeting was a week ago, so three weeks from that date, Justin would like our comments from the committee because she'd like to turn it over to the member who's with MRB group, so that if we need to make any policy changes based, based on anything in inventory analysis, that she has time to do that.
Okay.
So, any comments that you can make?
I'm gonna, some I'm gonna have to get a chance to take a look at it, so.
Yeah, I asked for printed copies, but she said, you can print all you want. Okay.
Yeah, it was very, it was very long, but it was a productive meeting.
What?
It was a productive.
Oh, it was a great meeting, the next thing you'll be in person as well.
I'm curious. I was edge proud with my daughters. Did they purchase the 980?
Yeah, they bought it from here.
From here.
Yep, like you started, that's what they just said. So now they own 980 Reven Road with 100 acres of prime farm land, but that's nice.
Now do they have to come back and get new approvals, or they?
I think I have to see when, how long it's been.
That's why I brought it up.
Glad you brought it up.
Because you need to talk to Keith. If there's new ownership and there's gonna be a new relationship, okay, with the decommissioning plan and all that other stuff, that's gotta be invited to the town, to the town fathers, okay, to prove. One thing about these decommissioning plans you gotta think about, that at any given time, that decommission plan, you can decommission a site for a bunch of different reasons. Lack of use, lack of production.
Maintenance costs.
Maintenance costs, all that other stuff, so whatever, the letter of credit or the bank T account or whatever it is, it's a shared account. And if you need to go after somebody like trees that die or something else like that, per notification, everybody has to perform, okay? So the town has some kind of power, and talk to Maureen about that, and if we don't have it, I have the other one. We should get it on this thing. Shame on us for getting it, we get it twice. Firstly, when you drive around and you start seeing all the solar farms that are going up, facility or facility, whatever you call them, but I'd say a good 75 to 80% of them are crap after they've gone up. Their, their maintenance almost horrible, the pants don't articulate, the plantings are all dead, I mean, it just seems to be a regular occurrence, and it scares the heck out of me. When you start, and now you got these people buying that one and then wanna open up a second hole. It, that doesn't, well, you don't know, they might, this might be the opportunity you need to have, they don't have any of it out there, okay? And if they're an upfront corporation, then we need to deal with that.
At least there's key ownership, that's positive.
We need to get that in writing and organized. In writing.
Oh, yeah, that should be.
Corrego said they're gonna keep ownership too, they're gone.
But they, but they did, and if we don't, you can have a hole in the tax burden because of it.
And you know, that, you know, when they go online, I think it's.
It's great.
Okay, it's vital. I think, I think there's another problem with these that has nothing to do with us, but the way they're assessed. When we're in the Drake Road, losing all the corner of that, and that's a first cousin, okay, so I know very well. His assessment was 6.3 million dollars.
That's a number they gave.
And the, and the bill came to him.
Yeah.
To the owner, they wanted him to pay 6.3 million dollars, and then they wanted to reimburse him. Okay, and then.
They wanted to pay taxes on 6.3 and then reimburse.
Well, of course, of course, what it is, it's like, it's the actual value, it's like the value of your house.
Right.
And it's public knowledge, everybody in the world knows it, and so how much it is per thousand is different, because they don't need it. They don't need fire protection or school bus or, you know, water or sewer or anything else. So I'm sure the rate was pretty attractive, but I think if we look at that, that was 37 acres. Was the solar panels, and the property was 59 acres. So that 59 acre, because it's all one deed. That 59 acres is being assessed for 6.3 million dollars and there's soybeans on it. You know, it almost seems as though some of the property should be subdivided for the solar panel, that farm.
What'd you call that?
Facility.
Facility, but I think there's, there's problems like that, because this is something new to us, and it's just raw.
But that's the number they provided.
Yeah.
That's the number they provided. The value, the value was at 1.9 million.
And now if you look at them.
Well, it was a third party.
Yeah, and as you look at them, they should all be assessed the same. It should be like per acre. You got solar panels here and solar panels here, they're still just solar panels.
Take up the assessor, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's a, that was done on a third party basis.
Yeah.
And there's a.
Then our assessor went to Hamburg.
Then our assessor went.
Yeah, George. Anyways.
Sure. Well, my, my concern is, and I don't know anything about technology, how do we even know how much it's producing other than what they tell us? How do we know how much is producing or when it's not producing as much because they're getting older and, you know, they're not?
So I think if I remember right, from two applications ago, there was an online account that we would have rights to go to and see the production.
I should specifically ask for that.
Yeah, so I think, I don't know if we actually have it, but we, I mean, I can go on my house and see how much is generated today, last month, two years ago, from an online account, but I don't. So, I should be able to do the same thing for.
I know, one, one individual was up on White Road, that Rockford Airport, it's got a private one in his yard, he's had it for like four years. Good friend of mine, and I won't tell you his name.
I think we can locate him though.
He says, if there is, this'll pay for itself in 32 years and seven months. It came with a 20-year warranty. Kinda like a car. Because do we need to subsidize this parcel? I, I don't know, I think it's something, I think it, you know, it's not up to us, there's nothing in the code book that says we do the taxes.
My feeling, that's, that's between the lease. And that's between them and the property. And it's a.
How they write that as a property.
Right, I, I think the owners of the property have to have a lawyer that's extremely confident in solar law. And that's, as a town's perspective, I don't think that's the town's responsibility, I think that's the responsibility of the landlord. Now, the town can buy or beware and let him know that.
Well, that's, I think that's a limit of our responsibility, but I think it's, we are responsible enough to protect the taxpayer to a certain extent from himself, okay? Or, in the very least, in the documentation of lease arrangement, protect owners of the future. Okay, of properties, even if it does split or a subdivision, and there was and stuff to separate out the residential character from an industrial facility or agribusiness, okay? You have to separate that out just for taxes, but that does have an effect down at town, and if you're gonna represent your taxpayers, you gotta let them know that, yeah, well, we've already thought about this.
So, that being said, even, even with the decommissioning, they absolutely.
And with the decommit, they're gonna decommission and they've gone bankrupt, they don't have anyone. The farmer
is responsible.
Could become responsible in his old damn farm because he didn't subdivide it.
I think Corrego's so, everyone here in Drake is like that, they're responsible, the owners are responsible.
Yeah, but we don't know. We have a relationship. So, but anyways, things to think about, and I personally wonder if it's Mr. Gallard that's really going, or somebody else that's kind of pushing the buttons. Well, you gotta believe that there is some truth to that.
Yes.
And it, it doesn't matter, to a certain extent, is that him, deep, deep down inside, he really does want to have a legacy in this town, he sets his own legacy. So.
This is gonna be interesting.
Well, you got an opportunity here, but maybe the third time we can get it right.
Yeah. Would you like a motion to adjourn?
Anybody wanna go home?
Yes.
Yes.
All favored?
Wait a minute, hey, look, the Yankees are playing in Seattle.
My wife was watching the same game she watched yesterday, and she goes, look at this, didn't that happen yesterday? That's right, turn me into a Mets fan. The, uh.